Good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Good morning. Good morning. Shhh. It is Tuesday, April 8th. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blooming Phil Bonin, Busciano Sadio, Englander Fuentes, Weezer, Carrasco, Coria Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Wesson, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Englander moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Committee to resolutions for approval.
Bonin moves. Fuentes seconds. That brings us to our flag salute.
Yes, Mr. President.
If I could ask everyone to rise, we'll be led in our flag salute by Mr. Fuentes.
Very good. If everybody would just place their right hand over their heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Madam Clerk, if we could go through the agenda?
Mr. President, before you begin, there are requests to continue items 1G, 3, and 6 to April 23rd. Also for item 6, the actuarial report has been submitted and has been included in the council file.
So without objection, that'll be the order? Madam Clerk, so let's include item 25 with the other items that we're going to vote. Mr. Fuentes?
And I'd like to just, personal privilege here, just introduce Mrs. Meeks and Ms. Ismael's 5th grade student leadership class from Fenton. Are you guys back there?
Hey, guys, raise your hands.
Welcome to City Hall.
Okay, let's prepare to, Mr. Carrasco?
I'd also, thank you, Mr. President. As personal privilege, introduce the teachers and students of the LAUSD Adult Education Program for Older Adults and Commissioner.
Everybody, please stand up. Let's give them a round of applause as well. Welcome. Now, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, we move on to what item? Fourth with on 25, per Mr. Labange.
On the supplemental agenda, item 28 is an item which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before us? Oh, no, well, you know what? Do we have cards?
No cards.
Okay, let's just vote on it, members, unless you have some concerns. I don't see any. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
At this time, Mr. Englander, are you prepared? So we will turn things over to Mr. Englander at this time.
Come on up, yes. Come on, David, how are you doing? How you doing? Mr. President, today is bittersweet. Wayne Suda graduated with a Bachelor of Science degree from California State University, Northridge, in Environmental Health Science in 1971, and since 1971 and that day, this city, our county, Southern California, will forever been changed and improved. In 1972, he was hired as a Registered Environmental Health Specialist for the Los Angeles County Health Department for the first 16 years of his career. In his time with the county, he was employed as a health inspector, industrial hygienist, and hazardous waste program supervisor, before moving to the newly formed City of Los Angeles Environmental Affairs Department in 1991. As a result of his experience with hazardous waste sites, Wayne worked as an environmental affairs officer on contaminated soil issues throughout the city and the county. Redeveloped city brownfield sites into productive reuse as a team member with the city's Community Redevelopment Agency and the mayor's office. During this period, Wayne was named as an advisor board member of the UCLA Certificate Program in Hazardous Materials Management and taught a hazmat emergency response course in the extension program at night. In 1991, because of his change, the change in state law, the local enforcement agency, or LEA, needed a new home within the city and environmental affairs department was selected by the mayor and the city council to host this state-mandated local solid waste regulatory program. The city LEA was certified by the state in 1992, and Wayne Suda's program manager had successfully operated the program ever since. The LEA program was transformed, was transferred to the City of Los Angeles Department of Building and Safety in 2008 as part of the code enforcement branch. In 2008, the city LEA program has since become a partner in the successful operation of a separate combined city-county LEA for the Sunshine Canyon landfill, which is the last remaining landfill, unfortunately, in the city of Los Angeles. Unfortunately, not that it's the last one, that it's still operational. Wayne Suda has served three terms as program manager of the Sunshine Canyon landfill LEA, has done a phenomenal and incredible job in that role. The solid waste management field has expanded in importance over the years and is currently UCLA Extension, currently UCLA Extension has a certificate program in solid waste and recycling for which Wayne is an advisory board member and a peer reviewer for several major UCLA documents, including the city's zero-waste program report. Under Wayne's leadership, the city LEA and the Sunshine Canyon landfill LEAs become an innovative model for other LEAs throughout the entire state. It was the first LEA, in fact, to even have its own website. The first LEA to create the tools and formalize the analysis for environmental justice. As a result, the staff has been regularly involved with the training of other LEAs and state-sponsored workshops. Wayne Suda is ending his public service career with a combined total of nearly 39 years as an environmental professional, 23 years which have been as part of the city family. Wayne is here with his wife, Ann, a former chief of the county fire, health, hazmat program. You can imagine their conversations at night. Together with their circle of colleagues, they have referred to them as Mr. and Mrs. Wastes. They have a son, Matthew, their waste offspring, who will be graduating from UC Santa Cruz in June. No question, in some kind of capacity involving wastes. I don't know, Matthew, what are you, what are you graduating in?
History.
In history? The history of, of waste, I'm sure. On a personal note, I can honestly tell you that I've known Wayne and I've had the experience of working with him, and I sleep better at night, knowing full well that we've been in great hands, that Sunshine Canyon, as many problems as we've had over the years and continue to have, he has been an eye for the community. He has had his pulse on the regulatory issues there to ensure that not only is it the last remaining landfill in the city of Los Angeles, but that the people of Granada Hills and the northwest San Fernando Valley are protected, that it's also because of his leadership, one of the most regulated, if not the most regulated landfill in the country, and what he has done to ensure we have transparency and that we keep people informed with what's going on there is unparalleled. For that, we are a better community. This is a huge loss to the community, but I'm confident that all of his colleagues here today will pick up where he's left off, and they will tell you, if you look at the army behind me, it takes all of them to fill his shoes. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, on behalf of the Sunshine Canyon landfill Local Enforcement Agency, on behalf of all the LEAs throughout the state of California, on behalf of all of us that has stood up to protect those who can't protect themselves on environmental justice, on brownfield issues, on cleanup sites, on all the things that he has done to bring to the forefront in regulation, I applaud Wayne and his family today. So with that, we've got a resolution signed by all the council members and the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, declaring today official Wayne Suda Day, and saying thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Congratulations, Wayne. Congratulations.
Thank you. Before, before we let you speak, Reina from Sanitation, we've got, has a presentation
Well, good morning. I'm here today on behalf of the Bureau of Sanitation to honor Wayne on this special day. In some ways, it is a sad day for us because we are losing a good, great colleague. Wayne has been instrumental throughout his career in providing the bureau with a wealth of information and, and with, in the permitting and regulatory front. We've really got to know Wayne and his special attributes, like his professionalism and attention to detail, and we've worked side by side with him during the Sunshine Canyon landfill proposed expansion. We've also counted on Wayne to do the right thing at all times. Wayne, thank you for all your support you provided us throughout your career as the director of the city's local enforcement agency. Now with your retirement, we will miss the regulatory knowledge and expertise that we have come to rely and, and expect from you. We'll all miss you, and we hope you will not forget us. So on behalf of the director, Enrique Zaldivar, I would like to present you with a plaque as a token of our appreciation. It reads, Wayne Suda, in recognition of your outstanding and distinguished service to our city and in appreciation of your support to LA Sanitation, best of luck in your retirement. We wish you well and thank you for your many, many years of service.
Well, thank you so much. Let me, let me turn it over to you. And I'd like to have Wayne say a few words. This is a man who has spent a career in waste, but not a wasted career. I can't understand the sign, I don't, oh, Frank, yes, Frank's going to say a few words first, wait a second. Yes, come on, Frank.
Thank you. Good morning. I, as chief of the Code Enforcement Bureau for Department of Building and Safety, when we were informed that we were going to be having the local enforcement agency coming into our group, I just wanted to acknowledge Wayne's great efforts that he did in making that happen, making a smooth transition. He has done an outstanding job, and as a council member, Englander mentioned, with the protection of the, of the landfill and the community around that area, he's been a leader in that. We've appreciated all of his efforts in doing so, and his staff is appreciative, he's been a great supervisor, an outstanding individual, and we're going to miss him, and we wish him the best in his retirement.
All right, thank you.
Let's give him a round of applause, another one. Uh-oh, now we have the big boss.
They're just all lining up. Good morning, everybody. Ray Han, interim general manager, Berlin Safety. Thank you, sir. I, I really echo all the recognitions for Wayne that, you know, council member Mitch England has said, and also Bureau of Sanitation said, and also Frank who said. But in addition, I really like to stress an achievement that Wayne accomplished over the past five years. You see, for the past five years, Wayne was able to increase the revenue for General Fund, for General Fund, by 70%. He built up the revenue from $700,000 to $1.2 million. I believe that, you know, if every manager can do what Wayne did, then the city would not be in the financial situation that we are in right now. So for that, Wayne, I just want to say thank you very much, and thank you for your professionalism, your dedication, and for the person that you are, who is very nice, very righteous, and very genuine. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. I would just like to thank Building and Safety, the city of Los Angeles, for supporting the work of all of us environmental professionals. I am just one of, I guess, 100 or so who have spent their career trying to protect the city of Los Angeles, and I ask that the council continue the support to these environmental professionals and their programs. In doing so, we take care of the city, we promote sustainability, environmental compliance, and in the long run, we sustain the planet. So I appreciate the opportunity to do this work that I love, and hopefully, it'll all be continued by all the other environmental professionals within the city.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, and again, congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Englander.
We're going to take.
We're going to go quickly to item 19. Okay, Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh. It's me and Speedy Gonzalez, two fastest people in LA. Hollywood Highlands, this is Mr. John T. Walker, Quality and Productivity Commission. It meets once every 10 years. Quality and Productivity Commission is a private joke or a public joke. This city is not, I seek to the world, this city is not known for either quality or productivity. But I'm sure this guy, you know, our test on this is, we support the mayor if, if his appointee has never been arrested for possession of kiddie porn. Remember, Vieragosa had a member up here who got caught in kiddie porn. He's not watching this now, he's in the big house, he's in prison. So from what we understand, Mr. Walker has no interest in kiddie porn, owns no kiddie porn, and then automatically, since he's not involved with kiddie porn, we, we support the mayor in his position. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Corcoran, could you please quit the applause? It's a disruption. Mr. Corcoran?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Of course, it is not correct that the Quality and Productive, Productivity Commission meets every 10 years. In fact, the Quality and Productivity Commission does important work in working with our workforce to identify efficiencies and to celebrate and, and recognize our public employees who've done a, an especially remarkable job of finding ways to do things more effectively and, and less expensively in the city. They have an annual event to recognize employees, which is a wonder, wonderful way to celebrate the contribution that our employees have made in finding cost reductions. And there's a vacancy on the commission from the departure of Julie Butcher, who has done a fabulous job on this commission over the, the many years that she's served on it, and I couldn't be more delighted to introduce you to the president's appointee to replace Ms. Butcher, John Walker, and I'd like to ask Mr. Walker to come to the, to the front table, in case there's any.
Welcome, Mr. Walker.
In case there's any questions for him. I've known John Walker for many years through his advocacy and volunteer efforts in the Studio City area, where he's been president of the Neighborhood Council for the last four years, and vice president for two years before that, and has made, through his leadership, that Neighborhood Council one of the most effective neighborhood councils in the entire city of Los Angeles. He's been a great partner in, in making our community a better place. For over 30 years, he's served as a professional in the film and television industry, as a production designer and producer, and he's known for his volunteer, volunteerism and commitment in our community. I'm certain that he's going to make a tremendous contribution to the Quality and Productivity Commission, just as he has in every other endeavor that he's volunteered for. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to John Walker, and Mr. Walker, if you'd like to make a few introductory comments about your commitment to the city, and then we'll be able to proceed to a vote.
Well, first, I'd like to thank you for the nomination. I think it's a real honor, and I'm, I'm happy to be here. Mr. Weston, thank you, sir. For the council people that I don't know, I see a lot of new faces. I've been here a lot. I love Los Angeles, I love Studio City. I've studied what the Quality and Productivity Commission does, and I think the usefulness that can be brought forth. I believe in best practices. I think in honoring the individuals and the organizations that In case there's any questions for him. I've known John Walker for many years through his advocacy and volunteer efforts in the Studio City area, where he's been President of the Neighborhood Council for the last four years and Vice President for two years before that and has made, through his leadership, that Neighborhood Council one of the most effective neighborhood councils in the entire City of Los Angeles. He's been a great partner in making our community a better place. For over 30 years, he's served as a professional in the film and television industry, as a production designer and producer, and he's known for his volunteerism and commitment in our community. I'm certain that he's gonna make a tremendous contribution to the Quality and Productivity Commission just as he has in every other endeavor that he's volunteered for. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to John Walker. And Mr. Walker, if you'd like to make a few introductory comments about your commitment to the city and then we'll be able to proceed to a vote.
Well, first I'd like to thank you for the nomination. I think it's a real honor and I'm happy to be here. Mr. Weston, thank you, sir. For the council people that I don't know, I see a lot of new faces. I've been here a lot. I love Los Angeles, I love Studio City. I've studied what the Quality and Productivity Commission does and I think the usefulness that can be brought forth. I believe in best practices. I think in honoring the individuals and the organizations that produce services from our city is worth recognition and I promise to do that and work very hard for the council and the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Kukorion and Mr. Walker, it looks like the both of you have done a phenomenal job in elevating the comfort level of our colleagues. So, Madam Clerk, why don't we prepare to vote on this item? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate your vote.
12 ayes.
That passes, congratulations and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to item 7. We're gonna move to item 7 at this time. If we could please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 1 no.
Okay, that passes. We'll now move to item 23. I believe called Special By Cards. I have Mr. Murphy, Donna Pierman and Mr. Herman.
Yes, good morning, Mr. President. I support this item first name basis.
Thank you, Donna Pierman, followed by Mr. Herman.
Yeah, I don't believe, I can't believe that USC is giving a $100,000 contribution for the Department of Transportation, L.A. DOT and it, I haven't seen that L.A. DOT knows how to use their money, so I'm against this item.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Fellow Angelenos, public accommodations for accessibility requirements prohibit the exclusion and segregation of unequal treatment under ADA Title II, which covers all. Good morning, Mr. Labange. Thank you for interrupting. So the point is ADA prohibits discrimination on the basis of a disability in employment, state and local governments and public accommodations, commercial facilities, transportation, get it, transportation and telecommunications. So why is it for 10 years we've been waiting for a K-Rail to be removed as a barrier on a public sidewalk? I'm on topic, Herb.
No, you're not, so get on topic, please, you're not.
Okay, so the point here with Mr. Weezer is that the use of this money for public improvements around Hazard Park. How many darn times have I come in here and demanded actions at Hazard Park? That you illegally, Mr. Weezer, refuse to fix the problems in Hazard Park because we are minorities? And you would rather spend the time accepting monies to now fix the park? I've been coming here, Mr. Weezer, for well over 10 years complaining about Hazard Park because the K-Rail that you have on a public sidewalk for how many years? That's my point. Because the conditions of what you're doing is horrible. You're a joke.
Stay on the item.
And I'm reading it from the Guidelines of Disability Rights. How dare you refuse to make it accessible, a park, thank you.
Mr. Labange.
A constructive job and a great job Mr. Weezer is doing in this particular area. As you know, Mr. Sadio knows so well, the USC Medical Center, all the institutions that are out there. Now finally, there's focus and attention in a very effective way. So I wanted to stand and rise for the Councilman of the 14th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. President, there's a request for item 17 to go forthwith.
Oh yes, without objection. Item 17 forthwith. Thank you for backing me up, Madam Clerk on that. Let's go to 22, called Special by Ms. Pierman, Mr. Herman and Daniel Gus. Item 22.
I'm strongly against this raising the minimum wage. I just heard it's all gonna be all the way to $17. This is not the right thing to do. People have been working for like, I've been working for 30 years to get up to $17. But the biggest problem with doing it for $17 is there's nowhere to move up. I mean, I realize you want to give a livable wage, but the problem is if you go in, you always want to have a chance to move up in salary. There is no way that they'll be able to move up in salary if they even keep these people because a lot of people will probably lose their jobs because a lot of people probably won't want to pay minimum wage, that minimum wage that you have decided on. So this is a wrong thing to do. I mean, it used to be that if you came in, you came in at like 7, you could possibly move up, go up to 10, go up to 12. You know, there's a possibility that you could still move up. How can you possibly move up in the world if you start up on the top salary? That's not how you do things. It's like going in and hiring somebody and grading a grade 12 when they haven't even started yet on the job. Unless you're going for like, you know, a higher priced job like an attorney or something. You just don't do it. In the meantime, you took away our video confidence in Van Nuys that shows that you have no brains in your head. So let's not do this minimum wage that high. This is a terrible idea and you're just gonna get a lot of people fired and these people are not gonna hire people or they'll take away other benefits. It just won't work. You're just, it's stupid. I'm against it.
Thank you. Mr. Gus, I see you right there. Mr. Herman, if you're gonna speak, you need to come closer to the podium. Mr. Gus.
Good morning. So let me get this right. Do you guys understand that when you increase the minimum wage, you increase the wages for a few, but you're going to eliminate the jobs of others? It's basic economics. Increase wages for some, that's great, but what you're gonna do is you're gonna cause other people to lose their jobs and you're claiming to be business friendly, but what you're gonna do is make L.A. more restrictive to businesses who you want to move here. But this, this item, number 22, where you're supporting a California minimum wage of 11 and then 12 and then 13, that's contradictory to your $15.37 wage, minimum wage that you want for certain L.A. hotel workers. So if you're calling for $15.37 for Los Angeles hotel workers, why aren't you calling for the same thing for everybody in California? By your standard, you're now supporting something that calls for a lot less money to be paid to some minimum wage workers than you are for certain workers at L.A.'s hotels. So what you're doing is a little political gamesmanship here, but at other times, you think $15.37 should be the minimum wage. Where are your economics? Who among you has ever taught economics or has an MBA? I'm just curious. Where are you coming up with this or are you just posturing for your friends in Sacramento? Because most of you are Sacramento politicians. So again, what you're doing is that you're going to increase the wages for some and you are going to eliminate the jobs for others. That's what this city is about. That's why this is not a business friendly city. That's why you're losing business left and right. By the way, jobs in Los Angeles, your job growth is as bad as Detroit and Cleveland. That's how good you are. Detroit and Cleveland, zero job growth in 30 years.
Okay, let's, no applause, let's have Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Daniel Gus, for backing me up. The truth of the matter is the standard of these wages is a joke. Simply because we have people who downsize from government, from the Senate, now as a councilman, you think this is a good idea. But the factor of the problem is you don't do your math. And so I'm not gonna reiterate what Daniel Gus has highlighted because it's a fact, it's a truth. Let us not be subjected, subdued and show the ignorance of our inability to comprehend this notion of an idea that is so hilarious and I'm only gonna hold my time to one minute. Thank you, Los Angeles.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that passes. We're gonna now move to item 2, called Special By Cards. Mr. Walsh, John Walsh on item 2.
Mr. President, while he's coming, there's a request to continue item 1, aye to April 23rd.
Without objection, so ordered.
I've been told if I don't run, they'll take the time away from me. I'm only 70 years old, I can run really fast.
Stay on the item, stay on the item.
The item is number 2 and stay tuned for, number 2 is the Byzantine Latino Quarter Pico Property BID. The BID sometimes does a good job, sometimes does a bad job. You have to pay for it because the landlord can raise your rent to pay for it. It's these little imitation cops. We have enough cops now. Maybe we could take this new BID and send them out to arrest black people for walking on the boardwalk, which seems to be your new thing. Stay tuned for this. We don't need a Byzantine Latino Quarter Pico Property BID. We don't need another one. It does nothing. They're toy cops. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Labange.
Members, I go through the Latino Visiting Court. I want to salute Mr. Sadio and I see the community participating, cleaning up their neighborhoods. You're getting Catalina paved. All this is real good and a positive effect and it's our bids that have been an important component for transforming communities. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now we'll go to item 1. Mr. Herman, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Walsh on item 1. Please come forward.
Item 1, I am against this one, liens.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
It's an embarrassment that I have to wear these glasses because there's a black mark in Los Angeles and that black mark has to do with the illegal liens on those people who are affected and have the adverse, come on, Mr. Labange, the adverse impact by this city to conduct a business that regulates people and how they live. And I find it offensive that Mr. Price had to kick out those people from their homes before giving them their $19,000 relocation fee. That should have been a priority right off the bat. I'm talking about liens.
No, stay on the subject, Mr. Herman, you're pushing the envelope a little bit.
The failure to regulate by the Department of Building and Safety has one idea and that idea is this agency has failed the public. All of you, all of you here today, the public, the liens, the extortion, it's bribery at its best in Los Angeles. And how dare you sit here and say that I'm going off topic?
No, because you are, stay on the subject.
When the liens are predatory towards people. It harms the public from living and paying their dues when they have enough to skim over the actions of your citations. So, and in fact, I blame and disagree and more surely reject the method of the department's authority of these liens. I ask for the public to request and petition you to stop these illegal liens. Stop, stop, stop. Building and Safety, the Fire Department, Health Department, City Attorney, and City Council, take better acts.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes on this item. Members, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, has Mr. Sadio's substitute been circulated? Can we act on that now or? Okay, it has not. Let's go to item 4. Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman's out of time. Mr. Murphy and Mr. Walsh.
Yes, good morning. This item is a good item, I support this item.
Thank you. Where's Mr. Walsh? He's coming? Please, no, no, don't disrupt the meeting and don't fall and hurt yourself.
Please, please don't start the clock. How about that? John Walsh drops dead at City Council. Stay tuned, ladies and gentlemen. Here is another alcohol beverage onsite at the Globe Bar. I wish Judge Ferguson was here. Maybe it's the Globe Bar where the person who ran over his grandson.
Stay on the subject.
Okay, I'm telling you right now that we have more places to buy alcohol than any other place per square mile in America. And to quote Mr. Buscaino, "We are the hit-and-run capital of the United States. Don't visit tourists." And what are they doing now? Another one. Another one at 740 South Broadway. You know, L.A. is a desert downtown. You can't buy any alcohol. You have to walk 10, 15, 20, sometimes 30 feet. Another one. And the blood is on your hands, HollywoodHighlands.org.
No applause, no applause, Mr. Herman, you're disrupting the meeting. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think I'll move now to item 26. Called Special By Cards. Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murphy passes. Mr. Walsh and Mr. Gus, Daniel Gus, on item 26, please come forward. Hold on, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, if I could get you to hold on. I have to quickly ask for reconsideration on item 4 because I guess it got stuck in my stack, but I didn't call on Elizabeth Peterson on item 4 and I apologize for that. So we're gonna have a vote for reconsideration on item 4. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. And Mr. Walsh, if you could just step aside for one second. Ms. Peterson, are you still here? Please come forward and your card just kinda stuck in the box and I apologize. But please go ahead.
Thank you, council members. I just wanted to let you know that the Globe Theater was 100 years old this year. The operator is from Paris. He is a world-renowned theatrical operator. We are very, very pleased to have Mr. Chol here. We're very excited because the theater is being fully restored to its original condition. The Historic Preservation Society last month had the 100-year anniversary there and we thank you for supporting this business model. We're very excited to open in the next few months. Thank you for your time today.
Now, thank you. So let us open the roll. So, let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And I do want to apologize, we're having some audio problems at this point. But now, if I could have, uh, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Gus. Mr. Parks?
I thought you'd come out with 26.
I'll do the public comment, then I'll call on you. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is the flip side of the alcohol licenses. You give a lot, you give, uh, everybody gets an alcohol license, uh, to sell alcohol. They get drunk, they kill somebody. In this case, it was Mr. Bijan Shustari. You offered $50,000. Now, as you know, you haven't paid out a reward in, I think, four and a half years. If that's wrong, nail me right now. And you stop me right now and say, "No, Mr. Walsh, we gave out a $50,000 reward." This time, this time, this time. These are b- bullshit awards. They don't exist because they never get paid out, because snitches get stitches. You've seen my shirt for $25 on Hollywood Boulevard. I want everyone to know, if you say a word about the Bijan Shustari murder to the cops, you will be slit and sliced to pieces. Everybody knows that. You have exploited the family, you exploited Judge Ferguson's family, you have them up here, and you know damn well...
Stay on this item, stay on this item.
That this city and Mr. Bijan Shustari's relatives know damn well that you are not going to get anybody to, to tell who murdered him. Somebody was drunk from a license you gave out, and they killed this man, and now you're going to re-up the, uh, the unsolved murder. This city is swimming in unsolved murders. Stay away from LA until they catch these people. I want to say to every tourist, the boardwalk is frightening. You'll be run over on the boardwalk.
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject.
You'll be run over like Bijan Shustari will be run over. You will be run over, you will be killed, they'll put up a phony reward, and no one will take it. This is a scary, scary city. HollywoodHighlands.org, stay away from LA.
Thank you, Mr. Gus. And if we could, shh. Yes, Mr. Gus?
Good morning. I noticed, uh, Mr. Soriano Hewitt from the mayor's office taking Mr. Walsh's photo as he's making that comment.
Let's stay on this subject, Dan.
Well, I am, because it's, it's, it's about vindictiveness when you speak the truth at this podium. And Mr. Soriano Hewitt was just doing that.
Stay on the subject.
Yeah, uh, there are more than 300 of these awards out in the city, but the city of Los Angeles won't post them. The city of Los Angeles won't post the zip codes where the crime took place, or the zip code where the victim resided. Why? That's because the LAPD has a long history of race, of abusing people of color, and playing politics with, uh, and race rather than crime fighting. There is an ulterior motive when the city of Los Angeles does this. When you speak the truth, the mayor's office will take your photo, and God knows who they'll send it to. Will start taking motions like number 26 more seriously when you post all of these awards online, include the zip codes of the victims, including Mr. Shustari, where the crime took place, as well as where the victim lived. Because there's, there's something tricky going on when the city does this, and it's not pretty. And once again, you're victimizing people of color and people of poverty in the city, and, uh, and we're on to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gus. Okay, Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. Uh, colleagues, I'd ask that, uh, an aye vote on this reward motion. It's a request of both LAPD and the family of Bijan Shashiri, uh, who was killed on Sept- on Saturday, August the 3rd, 2013, uh, at 12:00 AM. He's 17 years old. He was the front passenger of a vehicle driving north on Prince Charles Boulevard, approaching Vernon. A gray or silver vehicle also traveling north on Prince Charles pulled alongside the passenger side of the vehicle. And at least one suspect from that vehicle been shooting, uh, and struck, uh, the victim multiple times. He was, uh, taken to Cedar Sinai, where he remained, uh, until he succumbed on August the 5th. Uh, we ask that any information on this case be directed to Detective Paul Funicello, our officer Matt Courtney, both of them at the Criminal Gang Homicide Division. They can be located at 213-485-4341. Ask for an aye vote.
Mr. Corretts?
Yes, uh, just for the record, since there were a couple of speakers in opposition, um, a number of murders that, for which rewards were offered, have been solved through the rewards program, uh, as well as, uh, crimes like hit-and-runs. I probably have the record because, uh, in one case, we did a, a press conference announcing a hit-and-run. Um, and the following day, we actually, uh, found the perpetrator because of that reward. Uh, so this is, this is definitely a, a cost-effective method to find criminals that we can't find another way. Um, and, uh, this is certainly a case that, where that reward is justified, so I certainly ask all my colleagues for an aye vote.
Thank you for that clarification. If we could open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, I now want to move to item 18. And that's called Special by Mr. Herman and a Mr. Arnold. So, if I, Mr. Herman's out of time? So, Mr. Arnold, if you could come forward. Mr. Arnold? Please come forward, this is on item 18.
Mr. President, an amended motion 18A has been circulated.
I understand.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and honorable council members. I'm Mike Arnold, the Executive Director of the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. As you know, LOS administers, uh, the Emergency Solutions Grant Program and com- components of the CDBG program that are part of the city consolidated plan. We appreciate all the work that's gone into the consolidated planning process this year, and we fully support the city's initiative to seek a waiver to the CDBG Public Service Cap and stand ready to support that. I do have some concerns, however, about the Emergency Solutions Grant component of the plan. First, Emergency Solutions Grants components are limited to, uh, prevention, shelter, outreach, HMIS, and rapid rehousing. Additional limits, these addition, additional limits were placed on the amount of funding that can go into shelter and outreach uh, by the Hearth Act, the reauthorization of the McKinney-Vento Act in 2009. Prior to this year, we have worked to maximize the flexibility of this funding by invoking a Hold Harmless Provision in the law, which enables Los Angeles more flexibility in funding shelter and outreach services. The proposed reductions in outreach and shelter costs can eliminate this Hold Harmless Provision and reduce the flexibility of how Emergency Solutions Grant funds can be used moving forward. I also want to address the proposed cuts. The proposed ESG plan reduces funding for the Emergency Response Team, a team of professionals who's available to business resident and residents throughout Los Angeles City and your offices for immediate response to a problem or issue with a homeless individual. The proposal reduces that funding by one-third, and the reduction will significantly reduce outreach efforts in the city. A proposed decrease in the Downtown Access Center will likely result in a shift of costs from ESG to general fund. The Downtown Access Center is a key provider of restroom facilities, uh, in Skid Row, and it's contrary to the work currently being done. The reduction in the winter shelter program will reduce those beds by 82, which provide over 7,500 shelter nights in a city that where over 73% of the homeless are unsheltered. Thank you for your consideration.
No, thank you, thank you. Okay, members, let's prepare to, uh, vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that, we'll move that forthwith.
And that's adopted as amended.
All right. Mr. Corretts, uh, you ready on item 14?
Yes, uh, I just wanted to say, uh, this is a critical piece of legislation for Los Angeles and for California. The film credits that, uh, we already have had in place, uh, are largely due to the good work of my colleague, Mr. Kocorian. And, uh, I think we should be grateful for it. It has saved tens of thousands of jobs in the state of California, or, or brought them to us. Um, and, uh, this measure, AB 1839 by Assemblymember Gatto, um, will be the next step in, uh, moving in the right direction to, uh, save our film and television industry and to start bringing it back. Um, there are a few, uh, items that are not perfect relating to this, but I don't believe they will be solved during this legislative session by suggesting amendments. Uh, probably the greatest concern is that, uh, musicians are not necessarily, uh, a part of this, so a film may be produced in California and then the scoring done overseas. Um, I don't believe that this is, uh, something that will be addressable in this legislation. Um, so I don't suggest any amendments. Uh, I think it's a critical message that the city of Los Angeles, uh, makes it clear that we are on board with this legislation. Um, I'd like to see us do even more, but this is a, a very significant next step in the process. So, I ask for your aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, well, first, for full disclosure, I appreciate Mr. Corretts' recognition of my authorship in the original California Film and Television Production Tax Incentive, but I also have to acknowledge Mr. Fuentes, who, uh, without whose work in the legislature to extend that, uh, credit, it would have expired. And so, it was, uh, very important legislation to, to extend the tax credit. Uh, but both, uh, Mr. Fuentes and I, and all of our colleagues in the legislature, realized that, at the time that we were working on that legislation, that it was not enough. It was what we could do, but it was not enough. And so, it's so important that the legislation that's now pending, that's jointly authored, uh, by Mr. Gatto and, uh, Assemblymember Raoul Boca Negra, uh, and has broad support, uh, throughout the legislature right now. It's imperative that this legislation move forward so that we can continue to be competitive with the over 40 other states who are right now offering lucrative tax incentives to draw production jobs away from California and to places like Louisiana and New York and Michigan, and, uh, the foreign countries like Canada, who are continuing to poach our jobs as well. Uh, so, we have to fight for these jobs. Uh, it's essential to Los Angeles, and it's essential to California, that this tax incentive move forward, be broadened, and continue to be made, uh, more effective and, uh, more competitive with the other states. The Ad-Hoc Committee on Film and Television Production had a lengthy hearing about this very legislation. Assemblymember Boca Negra came to the council chambers to testify on its behalf, uh, and we had a, a very thorough discussion. And, um, i- it's very, very clear that without this legislation moving forward, the people in Los Angeles who will be hurt will be the people who have good, middle-class jobs, putting bread on their table when production is here, and losing income when production leaves. This is not legislation that's going to impact famous producers or A-list actors. This legislation, the people who are depending on this legislation are the people who live in our neighborhoods, the people who shop in our neighborhood stores, the middle-class, below-the-line people who make up the real television and film industry in Los Angeles. And so, it's for them that we need to act, and we need to act now in support of this legislation. So, I ask for your aye vote.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kocorian. And I want to say, when I was in the legislature, I failed at an attempt to get, uh, tax credits. So, I have to compliment you for really, uh, pushing something through. And you're right, the people that, uh, it affects, it's not the, the producers, it's not your A-plus actors. So, I do want to thank you for that. And Mr. Fuentes, your work in ensuring that this continued was very, very important. So, I do want to say that I think the people of this, uh, city are very grateful to the both of you. Mr. Labange?
Thank you. I just wanted to rise and thank everybody for this continued effort. If you look back over 100 years, they came from New York to first make films, and they were located mostly in the Echo Park area, and then moved further west to Hollywood. And then, we've had it for so many years in so many great ways. Now, we've got to really sell ourselves here in California, whether it's from Eureka down to San Diego. So, Mr. Boca Negra and Mr. Gatto are right on spot here. Many of the people who work in this industry, as just described by Mr. Kocorian, live in our districts, are involved in our district in a variety of ways. In television and entertainment, motion pictures, just The Tonight Show. I think it was 161 people got displaced when, uh, Jay Leno retired and, uh, moved to New York City. So, these are important aspects, and think of every studio that's here. Uh, Mr. Blumenfeld, your district used to have all the old, uh, ranches for, uh, Warner Ranch. That's Warner Center from Warner Brothers. Uh, Casablanca was shot on the corner where, uh, the Target's being built at Sunset and Western. Uh, and Van Nuys Airport. All that was back in the day. So, we've got to keep it out there. And the real challenge is, technology has made such a difference. Where they used to process all the film, uh, uh, down off of Kodak, right by Las Palmas and Romaine, now you could do it anywhere. Now, they look at the dailies right on the camera at the minute. They don't process them. So, it's changed. We've got to be competitive. This is another way to be competitive. And the last two films, prior to the film this year, the award of the Best Picture, were The Artist, as well as the, uh, film, uh, Argo. Argo benefited, uh, 12 out of the 15 days shot in Los Angeles. Much of it was shot. The Tehran Airport scenes were in our very own Ontario Airport. So, it's a good thing. I got to rise for those who work in this industry all the way up and down, and, uh, thank those who helped. We've got to keep helping and keep making it happen again. A rock's a rock, a tree's a tree, go shoot it in Griffin Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I, I just ask, uh, and certainly think this is a, a good bill to continue, but I would ask, uh, Mr. Kocorian and Mr. Fuentes, if you look at, I think, three unintended, uh, consequences has come from, uh, people may be massaging this a little differently than intended. One, that most post-production work, such as music scores, are not covered by this, and most of it is being formed out overseas. The other issue is, is that there's a new business in financing movies in which, uh, a broker now sells the, uh, incentives for movies to nonprofits, which gets the movie production their money quicker. But when the brokers and the nonprofits, uh, take literally millions of dollars off the top, the incentive is not totally going into the movie industry. And thirdly, uh, from the most recent study on the return on investment, US, UCLA basically says you're getting about $1.04 for every dollar invested. Those three articles are on the CF number in file, if you want to review them. But it appears that a great program is being somewhat, uh, deterred and not reaching its full benefits.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, and thank you, Mr. Kocorian, for your leadership on this. Imagine, colleagues, if we had the opportunity to have gone back in time to understand that we would lose manufacturing, that we would lose automotive, that we would lose rubber, that we would lose different types of industries that help keep our local economy prosperous. Imagine if we had that opportunity to go back. This legislation and these efforts, and thank you, Mr. Kocorian, for spearheading this, has given us the opportunity to not have to look back, to be able to capture and retain this very important, significant, prosperous industry in California. It's because of your deft skills in the legislature to negotiate with then-a-governor and the leadership of both houses that we were able to get this passed in a budget. And luckily, for me, all I had to do was extend it. But to Mr. Parks' points, this project, this, uh, legislation could get much better. And the way it could get better is if we figured out how to solve some of these challenges, but also if we made it more competitive. New York offers $420 million in tax incentives for them to take our signature industry, those jobs, that economy, to New York. The United Kingdom, imagine this, it's cheaper for some folks, there's an incentive to make productions in the United Kingdom. They offer an $800 million tax rebate, is what they call it. And most recently, the UCLA School, the Anderson School of Business, uh, gave the warning call that Australia is now trying to get all of this business. Imagine that for a second, that it is more inexpensive for these productions to go overseas and travel and take all of that work, all of that glitter, all of that opportunity, and feed somebody else's economy. This legislation is very good legislation, and it will work to get better. And your efforts here, all of my colleagues, Mr. Wesson, your ability to put together an ad hoc committee to help demonstrate the importance of this, uh, signature industry, is giving a loud voice that this is a very important industry to California. Now, the numbers are anywhere between 3% and 8% return on investment directly. It doesn't speak to the multiplier effect, and we don't have to speak about it. Imagine this is a business retention strategy for California. Where would we have been had this signature industry... Where would we have been had this signature industry left six years ago? Our economy would have suffered even more. So for those reasons, colleagues, I ask that you support this legislation and make sure that you help people understand that this benefits California. It benefits California, not just Los Angeles, but California. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers on the queue? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sadio. Is he here, bud?
Well-stated, Mr. Fuentes. Let me add my voice to the chorus in support of this legislation. I think it is exactly that, a business retention strategy. And I think we have to be very candid about that. Sometimes we overstate some of our policies. Sometimes we suggest that they're going to create a lot of jobs, and in fact, they don't. And we had something called the Manufacturers Investment Credit, and it was going to create hundreds of thousands of jobs. And the fact of the matter is that tax policy by itself cannot do that. But was it sufficient enough to support as a business retention strategy? And the answer is yes. And that applies to this as well. Movies are to Los Angeles what ag is to the Central Valley or what wine is to Napa. The challenge is for us, though, is that movies are movable. They're portable. They can leave. That is distinct, and that's a distinction that matters for us and should matter for us. Mr. Parks, you're right, it's not a perfect bill. People will learn to game any situation, and that's happening, and we must be vigilant of that, so that we get the maximum and the optimum of dollars to create jobs and to retain jobs here in our city. I represent Mount Washington. It's one of the areas that's most populated by people who work in the industry. And so it's very key to the first district for the income that's brought in, for the taxes that are paid, for the services that are funded through the taxes of the people who live in my district. So it's very important to us. Mr. Coretz, I agree with you. There needs to be done more for the musicians. There needs to be done more. I would like to see a day where every weekend, when we look at what's produced by Hollywood, it is as reflective of Los Angeles and its demographics and the issues and challenges that affect all families, all residents of this great area, as opposed to looking like Hollywood of the 1950s. And so there's a lot of work to be done in this industry. There's a lot of work to be done so that the stories that are told, as we talked about just two weeks ago, the story of Cesar Chavez, is not a once-in-the-year event, but that it should be something that's as typical as any other story that's told. And so while it's imperfect, and while the industry has a lot to do, a lot to go further in terms of reflecting our society and the stories of our society, I think nonetheless, it's important as a job retention strategy, and I am happy to join this chorus and wholeheartedly support this proposal.
Mr. Blumenfeld.
I was going to add another voice, but I will add one more voice to the chorus and maybe a slight, I agree with everything that's been said and certainly share the perspective and worked with my colleagues, particularly Mr. Fuentes, in the assembly on this. But the other perspective I can add to this is, one of my extracurricular activities is I'm on the State Film Commission. And we are constantly looking at this, and we see that the credits get used up literally moments as soon as they open it up. There is such a need out there that if anybody had any illusions about it, you should know that it's, there is a long line of folks. And the statistics to back it up that show when we don't, when we don't give them the credit, they end up going somewhere else, and it's all borne out. Check out the State Film Commission website. You can see a lot of the information there. And I'll stop there, just saying I agree 100% and support this as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And now for the drum roll. Don't know which way this one's going to go. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Thirteen eyes. Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you all. And also want to recognize, we've got a former city council member, Councilmember Cunningham in the front row with us today from the 10th District. Thanks for being here. Fantastic. Excellent. Thank you very much. With that, I believe that takes us to general public comment.
Yes, Mr. President.
We do have a big stack of general public comment cards today. And in light of that, and we want to be able to get through them in the shorter amount of time, we do allow 15 minutes for general public comment. I want to make sure we try to hear from everybody. So if we can set the clock to one minute, so we can give everyone an opportunity, we actually have much more than 15, I believe. But in any event, we'll hear from Harriet Elliott. Ms. Elliott? Followed by Carl Scott. And then followed by J.L. Hughes. Hello.
My name is Harriet Elliott. I'm asking Wesson to close the case. My son's homicide case is 20 years old, and it's supposed to remain indefinitely open. I wanted to deal with defamation like the police will say that maybe I'm wanting money. I have no idea of money. I just want some justice for a black man. My son is darker than Wesson. I thought I was talking, I mean, talking to Wesson, so I'm a little confused. But it is 20 years ago. I only realized two years ago that there was a lot of things that bothered me. I never brought him up. I just trusted the police. I say now, how naive could I be to trust the police? Because my son's teacher said, "I have not one complaint about your son." So he was not in a gang. Last time I talked about it, I talked about a character reference. My son's parent, girlfriend's parents are character witnesses.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Scott?
No. First of all, we had three speakers that have all go together, General Dogon, Ari, and Carl Scott. Supposed to be speaker cards, one, two, and three?
Um...
We can go to the next person while you get that ready.
No, no, that's fine. You go right ahead. I'll accommodate that. Absolutely no problem.
And what's the problem with us getting two minutes? We've been here all morning.
So I've addressed that, but go ahead, if you please. Time is yours.
And we got some stuff we'd like to pass to the committee members. Each one of them get a copy. So we're members from the Los Angeles Community Action Network on Skid Row. We're here on the Dirty Divide on downtown. Nearly one year ago, L.A. Can members conducted a part study to measure the impacts of inadequate public health infrastructure in Skid Row. We mapped all resources west of Main Street and compared them to what's available east of Main Street. In your package, you will have information. You will find a report of the Dirty Divide, a color map that highlights all the trashcans in downtown and where trash cans should be placed immediately, colored photographs highlighting how residents are cleaning public streets and sidewalks, and a sample copies of complaints sent to the Department of Public Health and the Rural Sanitation. The CAO reports that that business residential community service partners, including some service survivors, do not support standalone toilets. Of course, that leaves out the perspective of homeless residents who, in fact, want more access to restrooms and hygiene facilities.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and have, is it Arena? Ariana, I'm sorry. Try to read the writing. Yes. Thank you.
So the CAO report speaks volumes as to how the city recognizes homeless people. It identifies people without houses as the homeless, which suggests that homeless people are not residents. As our report, the Dirty Divide clearly illustrates that the fact, that in fact, houseless residents themselves have provided ongoing cleaning and trash collection in the city's absence. Residents are forced to use very limited resources to maintain some level of cleanliness on the public streets and sidewalks that they must occupy until housing becomes a priority to the city of Los Angeles. Cleaning around encampments and gutters has been a daily practice because it is abundantly clear that consistent cleaning by the city of L.A. is not happening anytime soon. In fact, OGs in service have spent years going around the community, placing trashcans and sweeping streets, and they do so for a lot less than half a million dollars proposed to service 27 trashcans by U for the fiscal year of 2014 through 2015.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
My name is Carl Scott. I'm with Los Angeles Community Action Network. I'm going to get right to the point since we're down to one minute. What we're recommending is a shift to current political and government priority and resource from criminalization to housing. Number two, place adequate numbers of trash receptacles in Skid Row with frequent disposal. Three, frequent trash collection in Skid Row. Four, immediately increase the number of restroom facility available to the residents. Five, frequently clean Skid Row restaurants and ensure toilet paper, soap, and hot waters are available. Six, provide portable water sources for Skid Row residents. Seven, install hygiene centers at local parks or other accessible locations. And eight, develop a community health council to address issues for the long-term residents. We have been coming up here before. This is a human rights tools that we took these from. These have been implemented in dirty, war, and war-ravaged country, and these are only common sense and common goals to achieve.
Great. Thank you all. J.L. Hughes. J.L. Hughes, followed by Deborah Burton, followed by Joseph Thomas.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm seeking some information about the H, the H, it's H-L-H-D. Now, are they governed by the building and safety, or are they controlling building and safety? Because I have a problem with some property that I have on Chelsea Street, 2501. I get information from building and safety, then the H, H-L, no, the HD says it's no good. So I need some help. Can anyone help me with this problem? I'm getting shuffled from back one agency to the other.
The item of building and safety that was called and handled earlier?
I'm trying to figure that out. Was that item agenda?
Why don't you come to the ropes and let me see if we can help the gentleman?
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Labons. Thank you. Ms. Burton?
My name is Deborah Burton. I'm here today as a concerned parent. I understand the loss, I can understand the loss of a child to not know what happened to them. This has been going on for over 20 years. Anyone having to deal with the loss of a child and don't know what happened can be very devastating. So I'm here to ask that this case be closed, so there can be some closure for Ms. Elliott. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Thomas?
Good morning. My name is Joseph Thomas. I'm also a downtown resident. I'm here, number one, just as another resident for another resident to ask that Ms. Harriet Elliott's son's case be closed, so she can get the information from the homicide, so we can escalate this and close it for once and all. Also, since 2012, the Department of Public Health has given the city of Los Angeles numerous notice of violations and recommendations for the consistent inability to take seriously the public health issues related to the trash, lack of trashcans, inadequate restroom facilities, soap and water sanitation, and vernment in Skid Row. Instead, CD14 has opted to invest monies that could immediately fix these issues into the pockets of wealthy business people. This is not a problem of research, it is a problem of priority. The health of poor, predominantly black residents are simply not a priority. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Peabody, followed by Deborah LaChavere, followed by Bill Hui.
Mr. Peabody in the house. One minute. Violations of zoning code. Problems where? Here in Los Angeles. How dare we fester this malice towards people who are unequal and are treated unequally in their home and their residence? It is your issue, your problem, your negligence when you allowed your department, your agency, Dion, to discriminate against people in their housing. And yet you allow the fire department to step in and use its force of action when their job is to save lives, not remove lives from your home. So I hope in the future you get your act together, because the nonsense of all this is a bunch of shameful, embarrassing moments in the black days of L.A. And my shirt says, "Stop all the madness."
Hi, my name is Deborah LaChavere. I represent Occupy Venice. I hope that Mike Bonin will be listening, since he's a part of our community. When Mike Bonin went to the police commission, he told them that his constituents were afraid, very afraid, we needed more police. Actually, the crime has been consistently going down in Venice. What the people are afraid of is the urination in the streets and the trash in the streets, more than anything. When I talk to people about what their concerns are, that is always what they say. We have a lack of bathrooms. We have 16 million visitors, it's been reported in Venice. We have 16 bathrooms, maybe 20, that are, a lot of them broken. The other day, two weeks ago on Saturday, I saw six tourists pee in the parking lot right in front of me. Tourists, not homeless people, because the bathroom lines were 25 deep. That's right by the paddleball courts. Any Saturday, you can go out there and check my statistics. And it's only going to get worse as the summer comes along. We have a lack of trashcans. If people don't like to see the stuff on the sidewalk, we have a voluntary storage facility that has been over capacity since November.
Thank you very much.
We also need help opening the oceanfront walk.
We've got to cut the mic, only because we've got to give everybody else an equal opportunity to share as well. But thank you very much. Bill?
Good morning, members of the L.A. City Council. My name is Bill Hui. I'm the president of Fair Housing Coalition. We're a landlord civil rights agency. We want to remind you about franchising the trash haulers. We think it's a terrible idea to put about 80 companies out of business. It's totally un-American. I've been invited on a couple of talk radio shows about this. I was on Korean radio last Wednesday. The anger out there amongst restaurateurs and people who have small factories, everybody has a dumpster behind their building, is white-hot. I'm telling you, there's a tsunami of anger. Plus, putting all these companies out of business is wrong. You should reconsider. I think if you delegate maybe nine companies to each area, you could work this out. And I believe a lot of the companies would work with you. This is going to follow you. I think it's going to show up in future elections. You should reverse yourself in putting these people out of business. Thank you very much. FairHousingCoalition.com. StayOutOfMyApartment.com.
Thank you very much. Mr. Luis Perez, followed by Alfredo Vidal, followed by Pete White. Luis Perez? If I can have the other two speakers line up as well.
So my name is Pete White with the Los Angeles Community Action Network. Let me first say I'm sort of disturbed you talk about giving equal opportunity to everyone in the council chambers this morning. However, one minute after we sat here all morning is not equal opportunity to present to you. The CAO report that is going to head your way talks about things in Skid Row, trashcans, trash collection, pickups. The Los Angeles Community Action Network just sent a packet of information. We encourage you to read and look at that packet of information. The other thing we encourage you to do is to read the CAO report. In the report, it highlights 27 trashcans in the 2014-2015 fiscal year. They say nearly half a million dollars will be spent on 27 trashcans. My son, before he went to school this morning, did the math. For 27 trashcans at a half a million dollars, that is $16,800 per trashcan. That is magical math. That is the sort of math that's happening at the Water and Power. I say to you, look at that CAO report.
Thank you.
We will. All power.
Thank you. Mr. Perez? We can ask that applause be kept down as well, so we can get the speakers up here. I want to hear from everybody. Mr. Perez? Not here? Alfredo? Vidal?
Good morning, counsel. Ready? Good morning, counsel. My name is Adam Rice. I'm with the Los Angeles Community Action Network as well.
I'm sorry. I'm going to hold your time. Adam Rice, you said?
Yes.
I didn't call an Adam Rice yet. Did you have a card?
Well, most of the people you called left, because we spent all day waiting to speak on actually important issues, sir. So I have my minute. Could I run my time?
I, we have your card in? Okay, okay, go ahead. We stopped your clock. Go ahead and continue. Just want to make sure you had your card. Okay.
It's all right. I'll keep it short. It's unfortunate that we, Zara, and Bonin are here, because I'd like to talk about apartheid. This is what you have happening here in downtown Los Angeles. This model has been exported from downtown Los Angeles to Venice, all over this city. Is anyone aware of what apartheid is? over this city. Is anyone aware of what apartheid is in this city council? Because you perpetrate it every day. One side of Main Street has everything: little doggy parks, nice places to play, millions of dollars in investment. The east side of Main Street, yet again, has no trash cans, no restroom facilities, and over 1,000 people a night sleeping on the streets in a one-mile-square area. We got plenty of police, though, and plenty of repression.
Great, thank you very much. Daniel Gus, followed by Sid, followed by Sean.
I'll make you a deal. I get my two minutes to speak, and I won't drop the F-bomb during my one minute to speak. That's an offer. Okay. Productivity and efficiency. I wish I was here on this item. Because you cannot fuck your staffers and still think it's not sexual harassment. You see, you should have given me my two minutes to speak. You shouldn't have tried to withhold us from clapping. You waste time all day. I will drop the F-bomb when you lower us to one minute. If you have a staffer and she works for you, you can't fuck her. That is inherently sexual harassment. Fuck the staff. That's sexual harassment. That's going to cost us money. Mr. Englander, his honoree owes the city $17,000. We can talk about that, or we can talk about Mr. Englander fucking a very nice Korean lady. You should have given me my second minute.
Sid. I believe Sid is next, followed by Sean. Sid's not here. Sean?
Yeah, good morning. Can we adjourn in memory of Dr. Paul Simonovich, the old choir director of St. Charles? Can we adjourn him after the meeting? He passed away Friday He was a good choir director, been the choir director for 60 years. I'd like it to adjourn in memory of Dr. Paul Simonovich. We're getting ready for the dedication in 44 hours. That's 5:30 tonight. It'll be 44 hours. The church is getting done. The finishing touches are being planned. It's not really for the public. The choir is going to sing. I'll be singing at the dedication. We'll be singing the pieces in Latin. We'll be singing some of Paul's famous pieces. Don't mean to be sad, but got the word about Dr. Paul Simonovich passing away. I'll be here on the 23rd of April to celebrate my...
Great, thank you very much. Michael Waterman?
One minute? No, yeah, 59 seconds. Michael Huberman, Right to Share Food Coalition. At Right to Share Food, we believe that sharing food with our brothers and sisters is a fundamental human right. We believe that sharing food is a constitutionally protected activity guaranteed under the Freedom of Association Clause of the Constitution of the United States. We believe that sharing food outside and in public is an equally protected activity. Our goal at Right to Share Food is to exercise and defend this right. Let me introduce myself. My name is Michael Waterman-Huberman. I'm the founder and facilitator of Right to Share Food and a member of the Right to Share Food Coalition. Since 2007, I've been lobbying on behalf of the civil and human rights of homeless people. I operate Water Corps, a charity that gives bulk drinking water to the homeless people on Skid Row in Los Angeles. You might ask, why do we feel the need to organize and lobby to protect and exercise our right to share food? Why is next time? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Henry Meara?
Yes, the record shows that the members of this council once was blind, but now they see. They agree with me. They agree. I got the right to buy my time in laces, and you got to count for the money you place in revocable trusts for the benefit of Hackland Colley employees and left in union pension plans and failed to account for it. So when are you going to do it? Mr. O'Farrell say, those days are gone, sticking money, burying money in union trust accounts and not accounting for it no more. And the mayor say, it ain't kosher to be putting money in union trusts and not accounting for it on behalf of the people of L.A. So y'all better get off your ass and do something. Thank you.
I'm Sid. I was outside with the chief of staff. Did you read my name?
I did. I called your name when you were outside.
Would you be kind enough to call my name so I can...
You're there now. Go ahead.
Okay. Would you care adjusting my time?
Sure.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Council members, as you're all aware of that about two months ago, we had a stoppage of our work order, which we're almost at the third phase of the review of the plans. Unfortunately, we had a meeting with the DOT just about 10 days ago, and we were recommended that for this project to go forward based on what the DeLijanes have raised with District 14 is that we should have a circular or hammerhead outlet. Well, all of you know, and the DOT knows, and Mr. Mukri knows, and of course, Mr. Weezer knows, this particular street cannot have a circular driveway or a hammerhead. To create a hammerhead, we have to purchase a 6 million-plus property, which is the parking structure, to do it, which is not willing to sell. So we are back to square one. The issue is the following.
Great, thank you. And if you wanted to submit that in writing, if you had it as well, then you could do that. Thank you very much.
It was only 55 seconds.
Oh, sorry. Restart it at one minute. So John Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. As you may know, the LAPD, I must congratulate them for catching the rogue cops who have disabled the recording devices on their squad cars. Police commission is dealing with that now. Stay away from L.A. We had a gigantic war yesterday, the drum circle versus the LAPD. Make no mistake about it. I'm an expert on racism. You want to know why? Because I'm a white guy, and white guys invented racism. The drum circle is an African event. It's been going on on the boardwalk for 30 or 40 years. Suddenly, now that you want to get rid of all the Africans on the boardwalk for white tourists, suddenly there's a pitched battle between the African drummers and the white cops. And of course, you have a lesbian sergeant running the whole deal, which makes it LAPD, making it politically correct. The city is out of control. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker, if anybody has more cards, it'll be noted that you filled them out. Is Donna? Yes, you're a final speaker. Come on up. The other cards will be filed as at this point that we received the file for public comment.
Okay. I want to say, sorry, real fast. Sorry, it's good that USC is giving money to LA dot. It's nice when USC, our rich agency, give. Anyway, Miriam is home, taking care of her cat, Bubbles, who went to the vet. She got up in the shelter, is well-loved and well-cared-for. Anyway, I want to tell you that Governor Brown let a rapist out of jail. That's terrible. He lives in Palmdale. He's going to raise havoc. And so we need to get rid of Governor Brown. I want to tell people the Brown Act could end next year. Our rights to speak freely, or we'll have no rights on the city council. We need to save the Brown Act. Last week, you were in Van Nuys. Your only consideration, the Valley, is not good enough every two months for people to speak. Mr. Engler, do you pretend to care for the Valley? Yet, you went and closed Van Nuys video conferencing. Our sales taxes protected till November. We don't need to have it raised.
With that, that concludes public comment. Also, on item 15 today, we'll go ahead. That was scheduled for Friday, the 11th. We're actually going to move that to April the 23rd without objection. Then that'll be the order. And I believe that clears the desk. What other matters are before us?
Council has motions for posting the referral.
We'll go ahead and post and refer those. And with that, are there any announcements, colleagues? Seeing none? Are there any adjourning motions? Yes? Okay.
Just wanted to just make an announcement. As you know, Mr. Corian, you want to announce a little about the officer a little bit? I think we're all concerned about the officer and the Valley who was hit last week. And he's at Mission Hospital. We hold our thoughts and prayers with he and the family and the department. And also, the officer last night who was shot at the West Traffic Division next to Wilshire Station. They have a very dangerous job. And I know the police commission is meeting right now, and I just want to make all members aware of the challenges. As we all remember, the charity that happened to Officer Lee from Hollywood with the truck incident just recently. Think about them every day. They're out there, our firefighters, our police officers, our public employees, working for all of the city residents.
I appreciate that, Mr. Labonge. Today, in fact, continues, if anybody wants to, make a blood donation, it would be great. I was out there yesterday at Providence Holy Cross Hospital in Rinaldi in Sepulveda, where the officer is. I actually had the ability to go in and visit with him and his family yesterday. And so our prayers are certainly with him and from the incident last night. Mr. Labonge, I appreciate you sharing that as well. Thank you. With that, are there any other announcements, colleagues? Seeing none? Are there any adjourning motions? Yes. If everybody can then please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Labonge. Mr. Corian. I'll start with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm sure everyone has heard the news, and I'd like to ask that the city council adjourn in memory of Mickey Rooney, one of our most beloved contributors to the film and television industry over the last eight decades, who passed away on Sunday at his home in North Hollywood. Mickey Rooney started his career as a big star, national star, as Andy Hardy and as Judy Garland's sidekick in musicals. And he continued his career right up until the end. He was shooting a movie even now as he passed away. He was shooting The Strange Case of Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde. Nominee for four Academy Awards. He won two special Oscars. He won an Emmy for his TV movie, Bill, and he had a Tony nomination for Sugar Babes. In 1939, Mickey Rooney earned a Best Actor Oscar nomination for Babes in Arms. And then a few years later, he earned another Best Actor nomination for his performance in William Saroyan's classic, The Human Comedy, which was one of his all-time best performances. He served our country during World War II in the Army, where he spent his service entertaining troops. And certainly, he's been known for his colorful life and his great contribution to the film and television industry over eight decades of performance. So he'll be missed by many throughout the world, including his wife, Jan, wife of 37 years, his eight children, his two-stepchildren, his 19 grandchildren, and his great-grandchildren as well, and by fans throughout the world. I ask that we adjourn in his memory. May he rest in peace.
Absolutely. No, thank you very much, Mr. Labonge.
I'd like to co-present because I was going to do Mickey. Because we're all fortunate to serve the city. A month ago, I saw Mickey. Actually, got him on the phone. He was sitting on a little chair in Hollywood, and I had him call a buddy of mine who loves Mickey Rooney. And he did that. Mickey will never be another Mickey Rooney. I think he was five years old when he started in vaudeville. All the work he's done, the creative work that he's done, and as Paul just said, working on another picture. He was loved. He also was loved by many, I think, in a family, large family. As you know, he had eight wives, which is quite interesting. And not at the same time. He wasn't a Mormon. No, okay. But he was Mickey Rooney, and this was the guy we cherish. But to see him a month ago, he was full of life and fun. And I would see him a couple of times up at Mootso Frank, which is a restaurant in Hollywood. '93, great life. There will be no one like Mickey Rooney who has such a long run and such a love of people. God rest his soul.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
In addition, another person, the great Sally Williams, passed recently, the wife of Dr. Ken Williams and their sons. I ask we adjourn in memory of Sally Williams. Also, for those of you in the Valley, although Mort Allen, Mort Allen recently passed. A realtor also would testify here, and was very active in North Hollywood, Studio City Life. Maybe we call that Mort Allen at this time, and his memory that goes off. And also, as Sean Murphy asked us too, Paul Simonovich, if that's correct. Head up there, Sean. He's a good man. He was an organist, choir conductor at St. Charles Church right in Toluca Lake, North Hollywood. 86. I think if you get to 86, you're doing good. That means that St. Peter says, "Come right in and play in the music." God rest his soul and bless his soul, Paul Simonovich from St. Charles Church here in North Hollywood area. Thank you all.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Corian. Sean, thanks for bringing that to us as well. Any others? Thank you. May you rest in peace. And with that, we are adjourned. Be safe out there. Thank you.